May 15, 2018, Riverton City Council Finance Committee meeting to order at 6:45 PM. The Chair would entertain a motion for consideration of claims.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to consider claims to be paid in the amount of $137,039.25 Elon credit card in the amount of $4,326.04 manual checks in the amount of $73,694.47 payroll and liabilities for April 27, 2018 in the amount of $456,480.14 for a grand total of $671,539.90.
I'll say second. So it's been properly moved in second. Do you have any questions?
I can't come up with any today. As much as I'd love to see us go 14 minutes and go right up to the meeting, I just don't have anything today.
All right, then, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Do we have any other information or anything else?
No ma'am.
Okay, then, meeting adjourned.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful for the opportunity that we have to serve the city of Riverton and pray for thy Spirit to abide with us this evening that members of the City Council can give ample consideration to the issues that come before us and help Riverton grow and be a great place to live. We're thankful for the opportunity that we have to be here, serving these roles, and ask thy help in doing a good job in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Would the City Clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Lance Scody.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
I'm present and declare that we have a quorum this evening. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmembers Hancock and Bailey.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I declare that we have a quorum, and the Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda with the addition of the consent agenda to the consent agenda of the approval of a county re-subdivision in Paulson Estates.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the agenda has been adopted. The next item is communications from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Forgive me, I don't see that it's on the agenda, but I just wanted to address the council. I'm Rachel Phillips. I'm at 1026 East Park Avenue. And regarding the utilities increase for that vote last week, or not last week, the week before, I am concerned that there wasn't ample time for public comment on that issue. I have nothing wrong with it. It should happen. I'm sure there was plenty of research put into it, but according to several of the regulations that were passed here, the City Council votes after a public notice and hearing. And I was, I looked, I couldn't find a public notice at all on that issue.
Okay. I think we published the agenda.
And I published, or not published, I'm sorry.
In advance of that.
This is the agenda from April 17. Is that when you guys discussed it? Because it's not in that agenda. And that's the most recent agenda that was published.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll have.
May 1st.
May 1st.
Okay, so it was passed on May 1, according to the video I watched for a second time today.
That's correct.
Okay, so there wasn't any public notice given prior to that. So the public did not know that they needed to come and hear the presentation by Mr. Butterfield on that issue.
Okay, well, we'll have to check on that and see what we did.
Your Honor, we advertise, we advertise our agenda in advance or as public notice given is required. If council in the future would like to add additional public notice on particular items, we can always do that. We, but those items were noticed. And we can, we can bring that information in detail back to you. Not a problem.
Okay. Our, so refresh my memory on the process here. That a change in the water rates is not an actual change to our city code. Code instead says that we could change by resolution.
Your Honor, that is correct. The city code references that the City Council will examine the rates annually or as it seems fit. And then by resolution, it can make those changes and those changes will be adopted or posted, I should say, on the city website. And as part of the verbiage in the code, I believe there is a reference about it having a public hearing, and that was done on the May 1 meeting.
If I may, I actually printed out the ordinance.
Okay.
It was passed in October of last year, and it states that "The rates established herein and hereafter shall be reviewed by the City Council and may be adjusted at such time by resolution of the City Council following public notice and hearing."
Public notice and hearing.
On such change. Effective rates will be published on the city website, billing policies, et cetera.
Your Honor, is, so the question would be, is the agenda posting, which typically is the Sunday before the meeting, is that considered legal notice? I mean, that's the notice that is given? It's the standard by which that is given?
Your Honor, yes, that is. And we published that agenda on Sunday, April 29 was when that agenda was published. And then on May 1 is when we did have the public hearings, excuse me, for the three resolutions.
And you do publish agendas, but it was discussed under the City Administrator's report, and it wasn't itemized, so no one would have known that that was being presented.
No?
No, it was an agenda item on the actual agenda.
Okay.
I unfortunately don't have access to the system here in order to get the agenda, but I can certainly provide that for you tomorrow.
Okay.
All right.
And so that, I guess that does bring up a question whether or not that is sufficient notice. I mean, I'm not talking legally, I'm talking.
In the public eye.
In the public eye.
I would say no, but that's my opinion.
All right, we'll certainly give that some consideration. Because what we, what we did in the past was, was, this was the, well, a long time, maybe five years ago, the, the rates were actually part of city code. And so then to change the rate, you actually had to have city code, and then you had to read, you had, we had to pass that with three readings.
Yeah, that, that would be awful, but I understand. I have nothing against it.
All right, so, so we, so what we did instead was say that we are going to look at the rates and adjust them on an annual basis to match the Consumer Price Index.
Yeah, my only concern is there wasn't a public notice, at least as I perceived it.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for coming in, Rachel. Appreciate your, your paying attention to us. Come ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. I am Paula McCormick. I am representing in the Wind River Visitors Council, and we have two board members here, Kathy Klein and Ryan Preston. They are your representatives on the Wind River Visitors Council. You, you have an item in the consent agenda in front of you for the Wind River Visitors Council fiscal year budget. And this is an annual thing. As a joint powers member, every year we come forth with the next fiscal year budget for your approval. And I just wanted you to know that we are here to answer any questions.
Thank you. I don't, I don't think we have any, but that's why we put it on consent. Okay. All right, so that's, that's where we're at. Would the City Clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, May 1, 2018, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, May 8, 2018, work session council meeting. Approval of the minutes, May 15, 2018, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations for May 15, 2018. Approval of the Municipal Court Report for the month of April, 2018. Approval of proposed 2018-2019 Wind River Visitor Council Budget Plan. Approval of Open Container Permit applications for the Riverton Lions Club for a picnic on June 4, 2018 at Sunset Park from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And another application for Megan Wilson for her 40th wedding anniversary on August 18, 2018 at Sunset Park from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And approval of the County Re-subdivision, Lot 2, Paulson Estates, located west of Rain Tree Estates and north of West Mountain View Drive.
Are there any items that require further discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Finance Committee recommendations for bills to be paid in the amount of $137,039.25 Elon credit card in the amount of $4,326.04 manual checks in the amount of $73,694.47 and payroll liabilities for 4/27/18 in the amount of $456,480.14 for a total of $671,7539.90.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I would move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to present, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Next item is a bid award on East Pershing Concrete Project. Public Works Director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the fourth 1% project that's coming before you for consideration. It centers on improving concrete on East Pershing. This project was vetted by the 1% Committee, the Fix Our Road Citizens Committee, and from their direction, staff prepared bid documents, plans, and specifications. And we were able to advertise this project on April 15 and April 22. Four contractors and vendors attended the mandatory pre-bidding, and bids were received and opened on May 1, 2018 with the following results. Snyder Construction with a total bid of, excuse me, $257,910. Jerry Bornhoff Construction with a total bid of $240,610. And Dave's Asphalt Company with a total bid of $236,470. These bids have been reviewed to ensure that they are responsive to bid specifications, and from that review, staff recommends the bid be awarded to Dave's Asphalt Company. There are currently sufficient funds in the 1% account to cover this project, and I do want to note that the project came in under the staff-prepared engineer's estimate. That estimate was approximately $245,000. And just as a final note, I think we're very enthusiastic about the work that's being done with this fourth 1% project. We have about $2.5 million going into our streets this summer alone, and that's not including what's going into North Federal. So we're pretty excited about that, and we do have a member of our force committee here. I'd like to recognize Wendell. But with that, I stand for any questions.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the bid award to Dave's Asphalt.
Your Honor, we'd like to make a motion to approve the bid award to Dave's Asphalt Company for $236,470 for the East Pershing Concrete Project.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Consideration of Airtime Aerial LLC Lease Agreement. Public Works Director, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. About three weeks ago, Airtime Aerial contacted city staff saying that they would like to operate in Fremont County and utilize space at Riverton Regional Airport. We consequently have prepared a draft lease agreement for them to lease space on the airfield to support their operations. The lease is consistent with other leases for similar types of businesses. So Airtime Aerial will provide crop dusting, for lack of a better term, aerial applications. And in preparing the lease, they need about 10,000 square feet of space. We've located a good spot for them, and they've reviewed the draft lease. They are in agreement with it. With the timing of their desire to start and when they first contacted staff, we did not have an airport board meeting. So we did not have opportunity to run this by the airport board first. However, we did conduct a phone poll last week, and we did receive a phone poll consent from the airport board to support this action, and it will be ratified at this Friday's airport board meeting. So therefore, staff recommends that the City Council approve this lease with Airtime Aerial so that they can occupy space and perform crop dusting this summer using our airport as their fixed base location. The lease is an annual lease, and it will bring in $1,700. We prorated a couple months on top of that because they want to start. Well, yesterday, but we said as soon as it's approved, they can start. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the lease agreement for Airtime Aerial.
So moved.
Second.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Kyle, could you just clarify, are we leasing the space and only the space? Or are they putting any structures in, provide, using additional, will they be buying fuel up there? I mean, kind of a little bit more detail on what they're using up there besides our, that 10,000 square foot section?
Your Honor, Councilman, it will be an unimproved area. Any improvements they make will be temporary, so if they have a tank or something of that nature to store chemical, they can put it on that 10,000 square foot footprint, but it will be a temporary improvement. So they will not be making any permanent improvements there. Mostly it will be for parking their aircraft and any other equipment that they need when they're operating. Fuel sales will be in addition to this lease. Jim Steinhoff, who's our FBO, leases the fuel farm from the city, and in his lease agreement with us, we get basically five cents for every gallon that's sold. So the more operations we have on the airfield, the better it is for us from a fuel sale standpoint.
Great, thank you.
Kyle?
Kyle, are we charging any, this is the fee, we, we're not charging him for taking off or landing or any stuff like you would a commercial airline. It's just a space we're, we're renting him.
Your Honor, Councilman, that is correct. We do not charge landing fees for general aviation operations. It's only for commercial cargo and commercial passenger at this time.
Thank you. So I guess I do have a question. And that's because I have some history in the pesticide application business. And when I looked at the contract agreement, I, I guess I didn't see anything there with regards to security and pesticide safety issues. I don't know, you know, I guess that troubles me a little bit that I see, I, there's, I guess there's potential that they could just stack chemical on the ground or something like that. I think that ought to be, ought to be indoors, covered somehow, and protected, so. You know, spill prevention, I mean, that's just good practice, and so a good commercial applicator should be taking care of that, but I, do you know anything about that?
Your Honor, I don't at this time. However, we can look at what they intend to do with storing their chemical.
Okay.
And then request that they provide appropriate BMPs, best management practices for spill prevention. We could even ask that they fence off or secure the area.
And, I mean, it could be that they'll just have all that stuff loaded in the van, you know, truck van, and, and so they've got it locked up, and when they are not at the airport, they leave with it, and, you know, they've got it taken care of, but.
Your Honor, I'd have to look into those details. I don't have those.
Thank you, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the lease is approved. The next item is ordinance number 18-005, third and final reading. Would the City Clerk please read ordinance number 18-005 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 18-005 on third and final reading. An ordinance amending Title 16 subdivisions to revise Chapter 16.20 Improvements, Section 16.20.030, required prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 18-005 on third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions about this ordinance? Okay, would the City Clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Lance Scody.
Aye.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Aye.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor John Baker.
I vote yes, and the motion passes. The next item is ordinance number 18-006, third and final reading, Police Department revisions. Would the City Clerk please read ordinance number 18-006 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 18-006 on third and final reading. An ordinance pertaining to Title 2, Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2.32, Police Department, revising Sections 2.32.040, Special Police Officers, 2.32.060, Police Subject to Mayor's Orders, and repealing Section 2.32.110, Punishment of Policemen, of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 18-006 on third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Okay. Would the City Clerk please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Lance Scody.
Aye.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Aye.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor John Baker.
Aye, and the motion passes. That's actually quite a relief for me. To, to discover that we still had, we still had some code in the, in the police records that allowed me to discipline police officers personally and in person, and to, and to appoint special police officers. That was, that must have been from 1935 or something like that. So it's, it's amazing when you, when you, you know, you, there's the stuff that you use every day, and you get pretty sharp on that, and you pay attention to it, and then there's stuff that you, just sections of the code you never get into, and here's this thing, completely archaic. And so, you know, today, you have to be kind of special to be a police officer. Council Committee reports and Council Members Roundtable. Ms. Gibbon, have you got anything for us this evening?
No.
No. Kyle?
No, I have nothing, Your Honor.
Lance?
Yes, I got a, a couple things, Your Honor.
Okay.
The Solutions Committee met on May 2 to start our work, and while we're still kind of getting our footing, gaining members, confirming those members, I think I could speak for the rest of everyone that was at that meeting that we're pretty excited about the work to come. Really looking forward to.
we're pretty excited about the work to come, really looking forward to what will come from that group. I'm sure it's something that we're going to really have to dig down deep into and work really hard at. But I, so far, I think everybody is really excited about doing that. So, stay tuned. There's more to come for that, for sure. I also wanted to comment a little bit about the budget sessions that I've been able to attend over the last couple of weeks. I know it may sound a little crazy, but I really enjoyed them. For me, getting involved and understanding how the city, you know, kind of pays its bills, functions, how the employees work is a big part of why I was interested in getting on the council. And I think the budget session really helps, helped me understand that. Probably the biggest takeaway for me on the budget sessions is I can't emphasize enough how hard our staff works on developing the budget. As a councilman, I can come in two hours on a Wednesday, and magically, there's a whole bunch of stuff in front of me that makes it really easy to understand. But I know there goes a whole lot more than just that, for sure. So, I really think they deserve a huge credit for all their work. I can imagine it's very hard mentally as they have to examine a lot of things in detail. So, I really appreciate them for that. And lastly, I have been serving on city council now for almost a year, exactly a year, having had the honor of being appointed to fill the position, but never the shoes of Lee Martinez. Over this past year, I've learned a great deal. I've tried to jump in where I could. I've been impressed with the council, the employees, and the residents of Riverton especially. When I was being considered for the appointment, I stated at that time that if appointed, I would intend to run for the office in 2018. Now that we are only two days away from the start of the filing period, I would like to announce that I am going to honor that commitment and will run for election for Ward Two this fall. It is my intention to focus on and build up the positives of Riverton, to include its people, its businesses, and all that is great about Riverton. I firmly believe that positive begets positive, and I am committed to seeing through my service to the city of Riverton as positively as possible. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Lance. I appreciate your willingness to serve and that your year on the council did not change your mind.
It's been quick, too.
Yes, it has.
City administration report?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple items, or a few. We have two new police officers who have been through background. They will be introduced to you, I believe, June 19th. June 19th, and at that point, you'll get to meet our two new officers. We look forward to that, having some new people with us. And we, I would express my appreciation to Chief Murphy for his recruitment efforts. It's a challenging environment when communities like Casper and Cheyenne are offering $12,000 signing bonuses, and we still have people coming here. It's because of the work that's being done by people like our chief and the rest of our staff. So, a great deal of thanks to them. I would also like to point out that FAST was recognized at the Chamber Lunch this last Friday for, received the Community Service Award for their work in air service. They do, we all know that FAST does a great deal of work for our community and for our airport and air service. So, it was nice to see them recognized. I would extend that to our Public Works Director, Kyle Butterfield, and Kevin Kirschznick from IDA Inc., who accepted the award. And just thank everybody on that committee. Thank you very much. The annual tree ceremony for Arbor Day will be 10:00 a.m. this Saturday at the Veterans Park. The budget review meeting on the 23rd at 2:00 p.m. is in the Urbikite Room, as has all the other ones been, as Councilman Godey pointed out. There is an airport board meeting on Friday. There was a force meeting on Monday. And I would just echo, the final thing I would like to point out is, as we hand out books, as we look to get into the, and continue our budget review, and as we start beginning to develop the budget presentation for you, for the public hearing, I've had the opportunity, I've had a very short time. I've been here six months. And in that time period, we've spent a fair amount of time looking at numbers and a great deal of time working on this budget. I could not be more impressed with the level of work and professionalism that senior staff and all of staff has shown in their development of this document. I've done this for a number of years. I've been a budget officer myself, and the work is impressive. We look forward to working through this with you, but I did want to take just that brief moment to express my appreciation to all of staff. So, thank you. With that, Your Honor, I have nothing further.
Thank you. Kyle?
I received an email several, yesterday or the day before, on the water increase that we have had. And as I was talking to the mayor, I pay about $900 to $1,400 a month on water. And the, there's a bite on it, but the bite is double because without it, you know, I'm in the, I'm not renting any properties. But the most important thing is, is that over the last, was it three years? We didn't raise anything because the CPI didn't go up. And so, we didn't have any hearings. Last year was the first we had had an increase in our water in several years. And so, unfortunately, equipment fails. No matter what we do and how well we run it, equipment wears out unless we have reserves, unless we have money set aside for the specific use of replacing that equipment, we're not going to have a very functioning city. And unfortunately, everything has a way of increasing. Regulations on the materials go up. Publishing on proper handling of waste goes up. So, it's a wicked cycle, and I realize that the public would like to be informed and, but it's one of those things. It's just like when price of gas goes up, it goes up for a certain reason. And that's the way water is. We're fortunate that we have sufficient for our needs on water. We're maintaining that as best we can, but we need reserves to ensure that the quality of service is maintained at the level that we're having it at. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. So, mayor's comments. I will spend some time looking at the timeline on that type of thing. And it could be that we need to make that... Oh, Sean?
Yes, sir.
Have you got anything to say to us?
I would just like to add that this Thursday, our Special Olympics team, there's eight from the city of Riverton, that will be going down to represent Riverton's Special Olympics in the state competition in Laramie. So, that'll be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So, if you know any of them or see any of the purple jackets running around, you know, wish them best of luck, they're pretty excited about going down there. And, you know, there's several ladies, I don't want to mention them because I'll probably miss somebody, but there are several adults that go down and help out. So, I'm appreciative for the time and effort that they spend helping our special athletes go down there and have this opportunity. That's all I have, sir.
Good. Thank you, Sean. Once again, once again, there are people in our community that give of self to make it a good place to live. So, thanks for their efforts on Special Olympics. And I know the PD was involved in that earlier, in the local activities. And so, that's an opportunity for a number of people to be involved on a volunteer basis. Thanks, Holly, for reminding me that Sean wasn't just gone.
Wow, she's been there.
Just once or twice.
She's, and we did that a couple of times to Holly, was we ignored Holly. So, thank you, Holly. Okay, so, we'll take a look at, we'll take a look at that advertising process on water rate changes and that type of thing. Make sure we're given adequate notice.
Can I ask a question on that?
Go ahead.
Isn't it only eight hours that we have to provide? Is that right?
Your Honor, it is eight hours notice that we have to provide to the media anytime we have a quorum. When we do our public notices, we post our agendas on our website and is also on our, in the newspaper. And it's always the Sunday before the council meeting. And that is where it would say, and then it's posted on our website under the Meetings and Minutes tab where it shows our agenda as well.
Okay.
And the reason we do it through the agenda is because, unfortunately, the cost of publication is very expensive. And so, to do the agenda and then do a separate publication would add to our costs that we already have to incur to post the agenda.
Sure.
We just had done it as, in conjunction.
That's fine. Okay. I'll still look at it.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So, the other, the other thing is, as you know, I was appointed to the Governor's Air Service Enhancement Council, which met last week in Sheridan. And that's why I wasn't at the meeting last week. And so, I was in Sheridan for this, for this meeting. And so, today, we actually got some talking points that came out of that. And everybody seems to be pretty excited about the potential that we have with this capacity purchase agreement. And it's interesting to me that what we are doing with Denver Air Connections is a capacity purchase agreement. And so, the folks from Sheridan and I were quite familiar with the process. And it looks pretty exciting. They think with four cities involved, that'd be Gillette, Sheridan, Riverton, and Rock Springs, that we could probably, we could probably get enough attention that we could get a good price from an airline on a block hour. And so, what we do at the present time is that we pay Denver Air Connections a set amount every time the plane flies. And that's based on the time, the time from when the door of the plane closes and it takes off and flies and lands at destination, and then the door opens. And so, that's a block. Okay? So, that's the amount of time that's involved in that. It was interesting for me to learn that there are some airplanes, like a Q400, a turboprop, that actual operating cost per hour is less than a jet. But because the jet is so much faster, the actual cost per flight is about the same. And the jet gives you the opportunity to get up to 30,000 feet or 40,000. You can fly over the weather and the turbulence, and the turboprop doesn't give you that option. So, that was, that was, that was pretty, pretty interesting. And so, this is a pretty compressed time schedule. So, we have, the state plan must go to the governor by the, by the 1st of August. So, that's not very far away. And of course, YDOT has got a bunch of guys that are doing nothing but work on this. So, I think they'll have something ready for that. The next meeting is going to be here in Riverton. That's going to be in July. And by that time, we should have a plan to look at, a draft plan. We should have a draft request for proposal from YDOT to the airlines that we can look at. And I would expect that we'll come out of that meeting in, in July with those documents finalized. They have to go to the governor by the 1st. And if he signs off on that and approves it, then we'll have an opportunity to sign MOUs with the state that we're going to participate in this project. And in September, there's another meeting that's going to be in Rock Springs. By that time, we expect to actually see the proposals from the airlines, and we'll get some feel for what that is. Right now, the council is kind of, let's say, they're actively involved in trying to put together this request for proposal and make sure that every possible element is covered in that. And our experience with Denver Air Connection was that they kind of came back to us and says, okay, if you want us to fly, this is how we'll do it. So, they're, it was just, it was, the airline came back and said, this is how we can do it. Do you want to fly or not? And we said, well, we'd like to fly. So, but there's anybody on the council that's ever been through that process, except for those of us from Sheridan and Riverton that have seen that before. So, they want to make sure that they get all kinds of incentives for performance and all that kind of stuff. And they started out actually thinking that they were going to get a 10-year contract with an airline, including fuel. Okay? Yeah. And the contract that we have right now is year-to-year plus fuel. So, if, whatever, whatever it costs for the fuel, that's where we're up against. But we're pretty excited about this. We think we can probably get a, maybe as much as a 25% reduction in the standard going rate for the aircraft, simply because it's, it's going to be a one-time deal bid through the state. It would be cheaper to do it that way than the four communities to try to set something up individually. The big thing is, the base requirement is code share and baggage handling. The plane has to, the flights have to be clearly available on internet booking agents. And so, that'll be the big thing. The airline's going to own the planes and the pilots and maintenance programs. But we do some local marketing. We know that local marketing works, right? Because when we, when we marketed flyriverton.com, Great Lakes ridership increased. So, we know that it can be done. And so, the next meeting is going to be here, or the July 17th and 18th. So, we'd like to be, we would like to have a lot of people show up at that meeting and show some interest in what's taking place with the capacity agreement. So, it was kind of fun to be at the, in on the meeting, and it looks to me like we've got some real potential. Of course, we're hoping that Denver Air Connections will have code share and baggage handling by the 1st of July, but that has yet to be determined. So, with this capacity agreement, they plan right now that the first flight would be on the 1st of July of 2019. So, that's 15 months away. So, I gave everybody, I gave everybody a copy of that. And if anybody else wants one, I'd be glad to give you one so you can see what we've been doing. So, the next item of business is an executive session. The Chair would entertain a motion to convene into executive session for the purpose of personnel, considering the appointment, employment, right to practice, dismissal, complaints or charges against a public officer, professional person, or employee in accordance with Wyoming Statute 16-4-405A2, and for the purpose of considering offers, tendering wages, salaries, benefits, or terms of employment during negotiations in accordance with Wyoming Statute 16-4-405A2. sixteen dash four dash four oh five A ten.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we go into executive session. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? So we're into executive session at seven forty-five. And who's coming in with us? Tony, you and?
Myself and our city clerk, please.
And the clerk, city clerk, okay? All right. Thank you. Folks, good night. If there's any, if there's anything, we'll let you know.